Public comment as we get to the business session. But otherwise, let's hear what our friends in TVFNR are up to.
I think Elise needs to mute. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Unfortunately, this is the norm, huh? Zoom meetings everywhere. It's what we do. It's how we spend our days. I want to start by thanking the city because there's been some great partnerships that have been developed through the city. I know ADEC is a good example of it and how the private and public are working together to bring needed equipment to hospitals and to first responders. So a shout out to the city for helping with those partnerships as we move forward. Twelve Fire and Rescue, we're operating normally out in the streets, but obviously it's a different normal, right? So we have different PPE that we're wearing. People might look a little different when they respond to your emergency. But generally speaking, we're responding as if it was yesterday or two months ago. I mean, it's the same sort of response. We still have to respond to the medical calls in the city and we still have to transport patients to the hospital and to other destinations. So that part of our business is normal. That being said, very early on, we sent most of, well, actually all nonessential people home. And we said, you need to telecommute, you need to work from home. We're going to support you to get what you need to work from home. Before I forget to mention, typically on these state of the districts, I talk about all the great things the organization's been doing over the past year. But this COVID pandemic, clearly it's the topic. And I want to make sure you understand what your fire department's doing because they're doing fantastic things. The men and women that are serving the city of Newburgh, I'll tell you, the anxiety's high, the stress is high, but they're out there each and every day and they're responding to those emergencies. So I'm very, very proud of the organization. So we sent nonessential people home. They have been telecommuting from there. We did shut down our stations, our community rooms, most of our outside activities. Doesn't mean we're not training. We still train in stations and in the general area. We have a lot of video training that we get to do as well, but the stations are closed down. We try and maintain distances, social distancing. As I mentioned, we have upgraded PPE and now we're transitioning into PPE that's more sustainable. So we're doing pretty good, TVFNR. We have a large logistics group that have been spread out trying to find personal protective equipment everywhere they can. And I mean everywhere. And then we have a workforce of 450 people and they're actually out there noticing things too. Just this past weekend, we had a company officer that just happened to be at Home Depot and said, hey, there's some Tyvek suits at this Home Depot. So our battalion chief went in there, talked to the manager, who also talked to the regional manager. In a matter of 48 hours, we had over 700 pieces of PPE from Home Depots in the region. And we did share with our neighbors because some of the Home Depots weren't actually in TVFNR. And so we worked with our partner agencies and spread out the PPE. So it's a grassroots thing. There's ideas in the stations that we've implemented that come from the line, how to have our hot zone, warm zone, cold zone in the station when they come in, what to do with your shoes, how do we reuse masks and how do we clean them? A lot of the stuff is coming from the line. So in terms of command staff, we have a task force that meets, a task force that meets every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and they do it from 10:00 AM. Those meetings used to take about two hours. This morning's meeting was 30 minutes, which tells me we are actually, we have a machine that's up and running and we're handling the little questions. We're getting our equipment we need. We're getting the information we need out. So we're doing better. We did town halls with every station. So 27 stations were in a Zoom meeting just like this. And it was myself and command staff that sat there and addressed the entire organization three days in a row and then answered all the questions they had. And we did it for about an hour, hour and a half, and then we recorded them so everybody gets to see them. So we're reaching out, we're communicating. Our next step is communicating with families at home. We have some concern with how it's going at home for people. So we're going to start up a website just for family members and we're going to answer questions that family members might have and try to make them feel better. We know that it's hard on everybody, no matter where they are. And then we continue to reinforce the fact that I'm less concerned about our men and women when they're at work than I am between work and home and what they do at home. For me, it's more about are you doing the exact same precautions that you're supposed to do that we do at work? Are you doing that away from work? Because we know it's community transmitted. That's where I fear it's going to be introduced. At the stations, we implemented temperature checks. That's been several weeks now that we started doing that. So no matter where you work, whether you're in fleet, logistics, administrative offices, or a fire station, you get your temperature checked and you go home if you have a feed, period. No questions asked, you just go home. Then we're following national standards for some of the leave acts that have come out federally, plus our own internal leave policy, plus a TVFR COVID leave policy that we're using as well. So we did have one firefighter that was diagnosed with COVID. You may have seen it in the news. It was our first and so it was kind of a big deal. There was a lot of questions that were generated from it. But what we told the organization was that this individual did everything right. They were not feeling well. They decided to stay home. They were off for three days. They worked with our occupational health and wellness division. They took care of them, had them tested, test came back positive and by all accounts, doing very well. I am excited for this individual to return to work. But no, we're not going to share names, gender, or where they worked. We don't do that with anything. We protect everybody's personal information as well as we can. So that was the only one we've had so far. We've had about 13 or 14 people tested. That's the only one so far that's come back positive. That's a very good thing. And we keep stressing with our communities, just be honest, tell 911 exactly what's going on because our people will be there. They will render care, but we want them to get to the second and the third call. So tell them exactly what your signs and symptoms are so that we know going into it, how to be prepared and how we can prevent contracting the virus ourselves. We are continuing with our firefighter recruit academies, although they've made changes, social distancing, how close they get together. But we have to continue that. We have a lot of people retiring in the coming years and we need to keep onboarding new firefighters at the entry level. So that will continue as well. The only other thing for Newburgh, I know that they did postpone the pancake breakfast, which is unfortunate. It's an ongoing list of all these things, right? That we never thought ever would be canceled, that we never thought would be postponed, that we would just do. We took it for granted. And there are so many, it's just a laundry list of things that we've had to postpone. Not to mention one of our beloved firefighters that we lost this past, early this year. We still haven't been able to have a service for that captain. And it's hard because the organization's under a lot of stress and that still sits out there. So once we get through this, and we will get through this, we have that ahead of us, that we will finally have a huge ceremony, if you will, and deservedly so. Because a very, very valuable member of the organization was lost. So with that, I don't have any other information to share. I continue to send out and I will continue to send out to the city manager, update weekly or so, so that you all have information about how we're doing, what we're doing, what's new. But I can tell you, we are proud to be in Newburgh and I hope you're happy to have us because our people are doing a fantastic job there. So very, very proud. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's basically what I have prepared for you, Mayor.
All right, well, Chief, thank you. Thank you so much. And you know, the one thing I will mention is on the notion of a funeral for a fallen firefighter. I had the pleasure, I guess, pleasure of being at Alblodgett Service some time ago and it's a special thing and I can see. But thank you. And also thank you for including, you know, you've had member of your staff on our weekly calls as well over the last couple of weeks with our partners. So again, thank you so much for that. Anyway, questions, folks? Any questions for the chief?
I have one.
We go Denise.
So has this made you really look at emergency preparedness in a different way as an organization? Like many times, we don't really have emergencies here. And this is like a global one, but it is an emergency. Did you find any aha moments in that or like, oh, we need to step up our game a little on it?
That's a fantastic question. We have been lucky to have a well-staffed emergency management division for a long, long time. And although the leadership in that changed over the past year, we still continue to have a strong emergency management program. And we train because we're always thinking about the earthquake, right? That's always been the thing, is the earthquake, which actually helps a little bit prepare for this. But I will share with you one thing, since we're all just friends here and we're all in this little thing. Years ago, there was a pandemic threat that was coming around. And so we decided to gear up extra. And every individual that was hired got a red bag. I wish I had it in my office here with me, but a red bag. And in that red bag, there was a special suit that you could decon and a special mask you could wear and a few other things that were in here for a big pandemic or a big infectious disease outbreak. Somewhere along the line, probably four or 10 years ago, somewhere in there, maybe a little bit less, we stopped issuing those. And so when we decided to switch to a more deconable, reusable suit, if we'd have still been giving those out to every firefighter, everybody would have had one in their bag. So we would have had one already. So that's about 450. And then we only would have needed maybe another 500 on top of that. Everybody would have two reusable suits. So the interesting thing, when we did a survey, 60% to 70% of the organization still had that equipment. The other 30, 40% didn't. And when I talked to my partners in other jurisdictions, in other states even, the same thing happened to them, where for some reason, they stopped. So I think for us, it's never take our supply chain for granted. Always make sure we have, you know, contacts outside the normal supply chain. React quickly and early, which we did. But beyond that, more of an anecdotal, oh wow, I didn't, we never thought of that. We should have kept issuing those. But I'm so proud of the people that have stepped up, that have gotten us the equipment we need. I won't say it's perfect, but I will tell you, we're doing just fine with PPE. And I think there's some lessons to be learned along those lines down the road too. And then the other one, and I don't know if you guys have noticed this yet, since you're doing more of these public meetings, but do we have to have all the meetings that we have in person that we have right now? And I know there's certainly value in face-to-face reading a room, hearing laughter, which I can't hear, hopefully I'm funny. But you know, you can't hear some of these things. But how many of these things could we do and take into the future that we do take for granted? So I'm interested to see what the new normal is for us. As soon as we get through what may be a spike or a surge, that's when we're going to start to look at what is the new norm for everything we do? Whether it's a promotional test, whether it's a training scenario, whatever the case might be. I want to know from real smart people, what does the new norm look like and how can we change some of our business practices? But beyond that, these are the kind of events where the men and women of TVFNR, I know it's kind of weird, but remember, these people run into buildings when everybody else doesn't. They're running out of the burning building. Some of this is fun for them. I mean, they enjoy this kind of activity. They wrap their heads around it. It's what they were trained to do from day one. It's operations, it's emergencies, it's hard times and stress. So I couldn't be more proud. I hope I'm expressing that to you, that I could not be more proud of the organization. They are really firing on all cylinders and it's good to see.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Other questions? I don't hear any. So Chief, thank you again. Thank you so very much and for all the work you all do, right? So please, if there's any way that the city in Newburgh can help, please let us know.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it and I'll pass along the sentiment to the organization as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Review of council agenda and meeting. Any comments for the business part of the meeting this evening, folks? All right, what about council business items? All right, hearing none. Do we have, is Russ on the line?
I think he was having some trouble connecting from home, so we might want to flex our schedule just a little bit.
Okay, how's about the city managers report, Dan? Since...
Since I spoke up.
Yes, you spoke.
Yeah, I can do that. I think, you know, similar to what the chief just shared, I mean, we're really all coronavirus all the time, it seems like. To the extent that we can pivot a little bit and maybe do some other work. I think we're nearing a point of quote unquote normalcy in an emergency, it feels like. But I thought I'd spend a little bit of time just kind of bringing you up to speed on the last few weeks and what the city has been doing. In part, kind of got feedback from one of our accounting staff, actually, that they had contact with a business owner who, you know, said, well, you know, when the city closed its doors, we really felt like we were kind of left alone to fend for ourselves. And you know, it really kind of hit home for me that, you know, we really haven't, we've not abandoned anyone. We've certainly, we've closed our doors from the standpoint of safety and trying to observe the protocols that have changed as we've gone along and increased in severity as far as distancing. But the city's been open for business the entire time with, you know, few exceptions. You know, obviously the library is closed, but you know, the library staff have done an excellent job of making sure that there are online resources available. And you know, they've actually increased the number of electronic resources and books that are available to the community and promoted that. You know, so I think where we may have pulled back, we've tried to augment what we normally would do. And I think the chief said it well, you know, the new normal, I would imagine that that's going to continue, right? We'll have some access and we're trying to beef up the access that we have remotely to serve the community. Not just at the library, but you know, throughout all we're doing, we're really trying to think about ways that we can serve the community without actually physically touching them, right? You know, since, again, you know, the chief said, right? We're not, everything is not going to be business as usual or business as it was. It's going to be a new way of doing things. You know, so just as a quick sort of summary of what's been going on, we've got about half of our staff teleworking. We've got a number of essential personnel that are providing service. So the essential workers is designated right now are police. So we continue to have law enforcement capability and first responders, public works. So we've got water and wastewater. We want things to come out of the pipes and go down the pipes the way that we expect. As well as dispatch and actually our IT department, you know, as we sit here online, trying to conduct a public meeting, you know, it's become more and more important for us. So making sure we have the right amount of technology and the right technology available has been extremely important. I made a list actually of recognition, so I want to maybe roll down that quickly if I can as well. You know, start with the library. I've been incredibly impressed with the staff, the library, as they kind of transitioned off of, you know, in-person service, providing a book to someone, handing it off. Like I said, they've increased the online content. They actually started making masks. So you know, I've got my mask here that they've made a cloth, they're making cloth masks and providing them to some level of the community as needed. And really have, I think, already done 550-ish masks. I mean, it's pretty incredible. They're actually going to transition to moonshining, I think. Just kidding, they're doing hand sanitizer. Actually, they're going to make hand sanitizer though and provide it to the community, you know, to nonprofits and those sorts of things. And so it's pretty impressive that the ability to adapt. You know, we've got people who are really smart, really good at research and they've just stepped up. And one other area that I'm super impressed with the libraries, they're actually working with the school district to help the school librarians because they're really needing to increase the service that they provide, obviously, for students. And so they're making sure that as their libraries at the school are tasked with ordering online materials, that our staff has a lot of familiarity with, that we're just stepping in and helping, you know, offering a helping hand, offering to essentially do that transaction. We're more familiar with do that on behalf of the schools. So just helping where we can. Public information, you know, obviously that is sort of the thing right now. You know, everyone's trying to figure out as all of this continues to evolve and changes seemingly minute by minute. You know, Lacy's done an amazing job and you know, she's been inundated with a ton of information. She's maintaining the website, doing social media, creating infographics, you know, joining meetings like this and other meetings where we're sharing information with our community partners. And then she's making sure that all of our information is getting translated. And we're trying to do that as quickly as we possibly can, using as many volunteers and other resources as we can. So trying to be nimble as well and really think about some different ways of providing that service. You know, public works, as I mentioned, you know, continuing to provide those critical systems. They've taken up really using the National Incident Management System, NIMS, and tracking everything, going through all of the various forms and documentation in preparation for FEMA and other potential sources. But they're actually taking this as much as a challenge as anyone else in the organization's department. They're really stepping up and practicing the emergency management skills that they've taken classes on so much. And they're really doing a great job when it comes to sourcing the personal protection equipment and things like that, that we need to continue doing basic operations. You know, they actually use the N95 masks on a daily basis. And so that increased stress on that type of mask has meant that they've had, you know, hard times sourcing what they need to do their job. And so they're looking at alternatives there as well as just, you know, sourcing what they can. They've also done a great job in the facility side of making sure that everything is clean. You know, we have access to really good cleaning supplies and cleaning companies that can come in and help us on a moment's notice. And really that helps us with our continuity of operations, making sure that our offices are available and safe for our employees. And you know, people are not, hopefully, getting sick on the job. You know, obviously, police continues to be, you know, busy and you know, they have done what they can to limit the contact that they're having with the public in order to maintain that safety, the safety net that we have of first responders. They stepped up their use of PPE and you know, they're reporting on a regular basis, you know, their call volume may be down, but they're seeing an increase in people who are shoplifting or, you know, resorting to theft. And so we're trying to do what we can to promote the alternatives to that and, you know, be kind and really look for alternatives to, you know, what could be a negative interaction. You know, finance has done an excellent job, you know, making sure that we're continuing. We have state obligations, deadlines for our budget and we're continuing to work on the budget as things continue to tighten around us and get more and more sort of depressing, frankly, as someone who's looking to balance a budget. You know, we're continuing to model things and monitor the situation. You know, it's a stressful time for them and there's a lot to do. And you know, we're talking later on about some business support programs and they've been able to step up and really come to the table and find solutions that will help, I think, the community and really look for ways to be creative with our finances, to step in where needed. And then community development, and obviously Doug is always busy and I think he really likes being really busy and I appreciate that about him. But planning and building activity hasn't stopped, you know, as much as anything. People are continuing to need to have direct contact with our staff. And so he's worrying and keeping them safe when they're out on inspections, but also making sure that they're continuing to work and that service is available. So he's been spending a lot of time monitoring activity and responding, making sure that paperwork is moving, you know, processes or various steps of applications are moving forward. And he's been engaging with a lot of our stakeholders in the economic development realm, specifically the local folks in the chamber, downtown coalition, visit Newburgh, taste Newburgh, and with SEDCOR at the regional level and working on sharing information. And so, you know, I'm super impressed with our staff and I just want to kind of use that opportunity to say, we are, we're definitely still working. You know, even if we're not always here in person, we're teleworking, but we're definitely doing a lot. Just another few items real quickly. I was able to execute an RFP. Took me a little bit of time to get requests for proposals submitted to executive recruiters. You know, as you probably know, I've got a few positions at the director level that I'm going to need to recruit in the next year. And so that was issued on April 1st and so hope to have some assistance in that towards the end of this month, maybe beginning of May. Trying to use the time and so far I've had a good response. So I think hopefully it's the right time. There are people who are home and maybe looking for some work. So we'll see what we can do there to spin up some recruitments. We did say goodbye to Jay Harris as public works director on last Friday and the third. I think he had a nice send-off from his staff in public works. I've named Russ Thomas as the interim director until we replace with permanent director. And just approved today Vance Barton to be the interim public works maintenance superintendent for Russ. So we've sort of continued to kind of offer some change of status that hopefully continues our continuity, making sure we're providing what's expected for staff and just a high level of service. Working closely, as you can imagine, with the HR and the attorney to interpret what we can here as things are changing and especially in the employment side. The feds are not necessarily doing employers a whole lot of favors and obviously they're doing the best that they can to provide information. And it's confusing, there's a lot of information out there. So we're working to provide that information to our staff. And you know, really trying to make sure we are clear in the guidance that we're providing on leave and all sorts of things. It's, I'm sure people are really concerned about making sure that they're personally safe and that they have time with their families. If they've got someone who's in an at-risk situation. And then I'm personally working with finance this week on getting a proposed budget together. And then my goal of goals is to get back at some point to the community vision document, August 2019 document and to the council goals. And actually make some progress during this time when we're maybe a little slower from the, once we get slower, I guess, from the hecticness of change. I do think it'll slow at some point where we'll get to a period where we've got some continuity. And I actually would like to bring forward some of the council goals to work session, maybe in the next month or so, to start talking about openly and trying to get to some level of detail, I guess, and some action that we as staff can take to help implement those goals for you. So the last thing I will say is just a few reminders, you know, obviously we, well, maybe not obviously. I don't think the experts have said that we have peaked yet in our coronavirus cases in the state. So I would just want to remind the public to continue to be vigilant, stay home, save lives. That, you know, really the CDC is continuing to change its guidance, but you know, making that investment of time to make your own cloth mask or to find one from the library, maybe. But wear a cloth mask when you go out in public. Do what you can to prevent the spread, especially if you're asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. I think that's the guidance these days, is to wear a mask to prevent the spread. And then, you know, we have posted information on our website for community members. There are people in our community that are struggling right now. It's significant in the economic fallout of this disease and, you know, that it's pervasive across the community, affecting a lot of our friends and neighbors. And we've posted information on our website to try to connect people with services and meals in particular. And so it would just encourage people who are looking for resources and for help to look to the city webpage for that. That's it.
All right, questions for Dan, anyone? Hearing none, I see that Russ Thomas is on the line. How's about a LED streetlight conversion update, Mr. Thomas?
Mayor, we're working on the technical side of things here. We do show rest up on the screen, so Lacy's checking his settings to see why we're just hearing static. Stay tuned, please.
All right, councilors, do any council committee reports, any updates of any video meetings you might have been attending lately?
Okay, can you get it now?
There we go.
Sweet. Well, as I mentioned earlier, I tried to break Zoom. Been somewhat successful, but I think they've figured it out. So street lighting update. What we have is a program underway. We work very closely with PGE and taking a look at our streetlights. We have a large number of streetlights in town that are aged out. The fixtures are aging, they're high pressure sodium, there's a nice orange light you see when you drive down the street. And working closely with PGE, we've kind of developed a program that will improve lighting, safety in the community, and also save us a significant amount of money over time. It's, uh, planted in the ground about three and a half feet. Uh, they've got a whole board through the center of it. They run the wiring in and it's got a high pressure sodium, uh, vapor head light on it, the nice bright orange light you see. The light on the right is an example of the LED light, uh, and it has a dark sky cutoff shroud on it. The, the Cobra head actually has quite a lot of, uh, carryover backlighting, upward lighting, uh, a lot of glare and, uh, the distinguishing characteristics at night in the roadway are, are not as bright. Uh, let's go to the next slide, please. Here's examples of the, the two heads that would be in, would be used. Uh, a good example is if you go through the intersections, uh, where the traffic signals are downtown, the ODOT has changed all of those lights over to LEDs. So it's a much brighter, crisper, cleaner light. Um, the LED lights have what they call a bug rating and that's not to attract mosquitoes or moths or, or other things. What it actually stands for is, uh, backlighting. That's the light that comes offwards behind where you, the area where you're actually trying to light. Uplight, which is the light that's, uh, bleeds off into the sky. All of these are dark sky compliant, which means all of the light is directed down and into the area that we want. And then, uh, G is for glare, uh, and that's side glare, the, what you see when you look at the light. And if you take a look at the existing LED lights, you really don't see it. So the number ratings up there are actually exceptional. Uh, the zero is the uplighting. So all of these lights are, uh, dark sky compliant. And again, it, it would depend on the application where, what light would be put where, uh, off of what pole. Uh, next slide. So what we're taking a look at is PGE over the next 24 months, starting in July would replace all of the high pressure sodium, the orange lights, uh, in program A and B with LED fixtures. Uh, what that does is provide a significant savings monthly, uh, to the city for the street lighting program. Currently, uh, we pay about $260,000 a year out of the street fund for street lighting, uh, which comes out to approximately $21,000 a month. Uh, with this program, we would be saving, uh, over $7,000 a month, uh, by switching to LEDs. And they would continue to maintain all of these. Um, they're dark sky compliant. Uh, we've got significant energy saving, uh, on them. Uh, the decorative lighting, uh, that we have downtown would be switched to, uh, LEDs and also have, uh, dark sky compliant fixtures. And our savings would be, uh, $700 a month. There's a, a one-time fixture expense that we would have to incur of $1,576. Uh, in program C, uh, city-owned lights would move to, to, uh, program B or schedule B that PGE would continue to maintain, uh, take care of the lighting, uh, the poles. Uh, we're actually out of the streetlight business completely and the additional cost is $117 a month. So you can see the, the significant, uh, cost savings that would happen with this program. Uh, the infill roadway lighting, uh, could be installed as an option A, uh, LED. And what that is, is it would be installed where, uh, areas permit and where we do have some dark areas in town, uh, that do need some infill lighting, especially, uh, when we're looking at roadway safety. Uh, all large improvements or decorative lighting, uh, would be taking a look at that and take a look at, uh, whether we invest the capital for an option B or go straight to option A where, uh, we turn them entirely over to PGE. Uh, next slide, please. So what are the impacts of doing this? Um, once the conversion is completed, we're going to save, uh, when you add up what it would cost and what we save monthly, we're going to save, uh, over $6,000 a month in costs, which is, uh, currently a 28% savings. PG is going to maintain all of the lights. Uh, we don't have to hire a contractor. We've had poles knocked down. It's taken three to four months to get a light replaced, get the pole ordered, uh, have the contractor come in and the cost has been anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 to get that replaced. If we're fortunate enough to get insurance reimbursement for it, uh, we eventually get the, the cost back. But should we lose one, uh, due to age, for some other reason that, uh, that's not covered, then we're on tap, uh, for that entire amount. Uh, there's no additional resources to manage or maintain this. PG are the lighting experts, they take care of it. Uh, the city has really no capital outlay or anticipated monthly charges. Right now, on a schedule C pole, if we have a streetlight out, someone calls in, uh, we turn that into PG. We ask them to go out and repair it for us because we do not have certified, uh, linemen, uh, the expertise or the tools to do that. Uh, they'll come and replace it and then they send us a bill, uh, for whatever the cost is. In newer fixtures, it's changing a light bulb or changing the photo sensor, but in the older fixtures that are no longer maintained, they're not repairable, they have to actually replace the fixture. So we're putting, replacing a high pressure sodium fixture with another high pressure sodium fixture. And the cost depending on the location, the type, the pole can range anywhere from $600 or $700 to about $1,500 each time that that happens. And that's the end of life, uh, billing for failed fixtures. Uh, we've got a lot of fixtures in town that are 20, 30, 40 years old and when they fail, they have to be replaced. Next slide, please. Um, so efficiency, we reduce the energy, uh, that's used significantly. Uh, all new subdivisions are being installed with LEDs. Developers are paying, uh, for those in deed in them, the, to the city, they would be a, an option B and PG would maintain. Uh, as the technology improves, uh, PG is the lighting improves and, and I'm not sure what generation of LED streetlights we're on now. I'm thinking we're in the, the sixth or seventh generation. Uh, lighting improves, energy goes down, uh, and they're virtually maintenance free. And, uh, old wood poles will have to be replaced by pole, would be replaced by poles that have a longer life. The, the photo that you can see is actually, we have a program going now where we're going to replace 25 aged wood poles, uh, with PG and turn them over to them. Uh, above ground, the pole looks fine, but if you dig down, uh, a foot, the wood is actually rotting away and, and we've caught a couple of poles just before they fell over, uh, fortunately. Uh, but we've gone out and identified 25 poles that are in pretty poor shape. This, this happens to be a picture, one of them, it's hard to see, but there's an inch all the way around that pole of wood that's missing. Uh, so there's, uh, a reason they need to be replaced and replaced soon. Next slide, please. Safety, uh, inconsistency, uh, livability has improved. Uh, the lighting is a truer lighting. Uh, it actually, uh, you can see things, the police, uh, and actually in Toaleton, uh, and other cities that have done this program, uh, the, they can see much better. Uh, the pedestrians can see much better at night, uh, traffic can see much better. Uh, and there's no real light bleed off that bug rating and all the light is directed to the road surface and not out into the sky or into someone's living room. So it improves the live, uh, livability in the community. Uh, the failure rate is very insignificant. Uh, instead of the whole bulb failing, it's one tiny component of the LED head that fails and over a period of time it may need to be replaced, but, uh, these things have proven to last 20, 25 years. And with, uh, the current ownership, uh, would remain mixed, uh, in repairs, uh, and developer confusion between light poles and things would, uh, go away. Next slide, please. So an example, this is the exact same street, one with high pressure sodium, uh, lighting on the left. Uh, on the right is, uh, the LED light fixtures. And if you take a look down the street, you can see how well it's lit, uh, the true color lighting. Uh, I actually didn't know there was a mailbox, uh, farther down there on the right, if you take a look at the first picture. So this is a, a good example of what the improvements the community would be, but, uh, the, the most significant part is the cost. We currently budget, uh, about $280,000 a year to, uh, pay for our street lighting. We budget an additional $30,000 a year to cover, uh, replacing the end-of-life, uh, lightheads. And with an LED conversion, we would be saving, uh, about 28% of our annual budget for street lighting and not having to pay for end-of-life, uh, replacements of those streetlights, which is an additional savings. And given the current, uh, economic status, uh, this only makes sense, uh, to move forward with it. And I believe that's the end of the slide. So if there's questions, I would be more than happy to answer any of them.
All right, any, uh, any questions, folks? And I understand that Wendy believes and Kevin Muck from, uh, PG are also on the line. So if you have any questions that we'd like to direct to any of these folks. Well, I'll start with one, Russ, and you know, as, as we're going down the sustainability road, um, I'm sure the energy savings, if there's a way to quantify that in whatever it might be kilowatt hours or anything like that, uh, that would probably be good information to have, uh, just as we go forward.
We can, uh, put that number together.
Yeah, awesome, awesome. Any other questions, folks? All right, well, Russ, thank you, thank you so much. Wendy and Kevin, thank you as well. Um, and you all stay healthy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Wendy and Kevin for, uh, listening in. I'm sure you'll, uh, correct me if I, I missed anything, uh, in this later.
And Kevin, actually Kevin would like a copy of the PowerPoint if, uh, we can get that to him, that would be great.
I will make sure he gets a copy.
Awesome, thank you so much, Russ.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we've got about 15 minutes here on this session. Um, let's see, any, uh, any items from, from councilors on any of your committees at this point?
Uh, yeah, I had one. Um, attended the, uh, Mid Willamette Valley Committee on Transportation. Uh, that was a lot of fun, 24 politicians on a Zoom call.
Oh, I don't know if we just lost Patrick.
Four that's also starting. They're talking about the philosophy of how they're going to allocate money and then, um, after they do that, they're going to start picking projects to fund. So, um, that's going to be heating up and could mean some funding for the bypass. I'm not sure yet though, so we're waiting to see what the Oregon Transportation Commission does and what the, the different acts around the state do. So, um, monitoring that and I'll keep you up to date on, on, uh, what I find out. So that's all I have.
Nice. Uh, just one thing on that, Patrick did get a call today from Dave, Dave Hoggler, who was trying to put together, I believe, um, some kind of letter, et cetera, that he'd like to get submitted, um, here soon. So I'll share that with you once we get the, the text of that.
Okay.
All right. Um, hearing, oh, there we go.
Hi, so this is not a committee, but, um, I just wanted to update you guys. I had a meeting with Casey Kula, um, one of our county commissioners and, um, somebody by the name of Deborah Simpier of Althea, which is a high-speed internet company that is providing, um, sort of low-cost services to rural areas. It's a kind of a different sort of model of internet service for some rural areas. Um, you know, certainly it needs more vetting, but it was an interesting conversation around the needs for people now that everybody is working from home, schooling from home, doing those kinds of things and how they're getting access to high-speed internet, um, for prices that aren't so exorbitant that they can't afford it. Um, some of the things that they're, they're trying to do is to bring higher speed internet to rural areas, um, where you wouldn't get shut off for non-payment. Your service might be slowed down a little bit, but you're not going to get shut off so that kids can still access school, um, parents can still access internet in order to do their jobs from home and those kinds of things. Um, it's a lower cost model. It's also a model that they're doing in Spanish, um, and so it would be accessible to Spanish-speaking, um, people, um, in areas that are needing internet service that's higher speed and lower cost. So it's just something to start kind of having the conversation around what our needs are in Newburgh and whether or not a model like this might be interesting even for people within the city limits that, um, are having trouble paying for internet, having trouble accessing internet, um, services in their native language, um, or are just needing additional internet services, um, for kids and parents that are doing all of their work from home. So, um, it's an interesting idea and I will keep you updated. I think Casey's doing, um, some work on his end. Um, we've sort of asked some other people to weigh in on whether or not this is something that would be interesting, um, and whether or not it looks like a good sort of model for our area. They've already started doing it, um, out in Claxtoni and they've had some success with it. So it'll, and they've not been doing it a whole long time in Claxtoni. So it'll be an interesting thing to sort of see how it is working for that area and whether people are getting the services that they need, um, for reasonable prices and those kinds of things. So just an interesting thing.
Stephanie, could you send me that name of that company? We just met with leaders from all over the state that are just have no idea what they're going to do because they just don't have.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And, um, they came to me through Rural Organizing Project, um, who tends to really vet things well before they send them on. So that's hopeful, but yeah, I will definitely send that to you for sure.
This is Elise, hi.
Hey there.
Hi. Um, I, um, before COVID-19 happened, we had a really amazing meeting. Can't even remember everyone who was there now, but on affordable housing and the projects that are going on in our community around, um, supporting our houseless population. And then now, of course, in the midst of everything right now, that's been at the forefront of my mind, um, but a lot of projects have been paused right now. So I did just want to, um, put out there that, you know, I, I have seen some emails floating around and I haven't been super responsive and I just want to just apologize for my lack of response in those emails because I've been pretty, um, in over my head with my work right now. But, um, I do have some updates offline if someone wants to communicate with me around how to support our houseless population in Newburgh. I do have some, some temporary options if people would like to reach out. So that's just all I had.
Yeah, actually that'd be good, Elise, because as, as you may have seen or some of you saw, there was some traffic, um, about Memorial Park and the shelter there. Um, and, you know, an attempt to at least have people out of the rain, um, sort of exploded into a lot bigger numbers than we had anticipated. So, um, yeah, any, anything we could do. I think it, this pandemic's really underscored that and, and the needs here in town, so we'll
So just an interesting thing.
Stephanie, could you send me that name of that company? We just met with leaders from all over the state that are just have no idea what they're gonna do because they just don't have.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. And they came to me through Rural Organizing Project, who tends to really vet things well before they send them on. So that's hopeful, but yeah, I will definitely send that to you for sure.
This is Elise. Hi.
Hey there.
Hi. I, before COVID-19 happened, we had a really amazing meeting. Can't even remember everyone who was there now, but on affordable housing and the projects that are going on in our community around supporting our houseless population. And then now, of course, in the midst of everything right now, that's been at the forefront of my mind, but a lot of projects have been paused right now. So I did just wanna put out there that, you know, I have seen some emails floating around and I haven't been super responsive and I just wanna just apologize for my lack of response in those emails because I've been pretty in over my head with my work right now. But I do have some updates offline if someone wants to communicate with me around how to support our houseless population in Newburgh. I do have some, some temporary options if people would like to reach out. So that's just all I had.
Yeah, actually, that'd be good, Elise, because as, as you may have seen, or some of you saw, there was some traffic about Memorial Park and the shelter there. And, you know, an attempt to at least have people out of the rain sort of exploded into a lot bigger numbers than we anticipated. So, yeah, any, anything we could do. I think this pandemic's really underscored that and, and the needs here in town. So we'll have to get back to that. So. All right, anyone else? Okay, why don't we take an eight minute break and be back here at seven, if that's all right? Can we do that? Lindsay and Sue, Lacy, I mean, and Sue?
Yeah, she can put up the Camelia picture and I would ask that everyone just turn off their video, but not actually leave the meeting so that we don't have to. Please don't, please don't exit Zoom. Just, just turn your video off.
All right, folks, looks like it's seven o'clock if we're ready to get back to it. All right, the City Council, City Council Business Session for April 6th is now in order. Sue, a roll call, please.
Counselor Pirro? Okay, Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Yonel Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Bacon, or Counselor Bacon, sorry.
It's okay. Here.
Counselor Finley?
Here.
And Counselor Pirro?
Here, can you hear me?
Oh, all right, all right. Pledge of Allegiance, please. And I've been warned stand up, but step away from your screen, otherwise you'll be, I don't wanna be showing my.
We're in the honor system as to who said the pledge.
Yes, oh, sorry, I was muted. Oh, no. I apologize, we did say it, we did say, you want me to say it again? People feel happy if I say it again. Let's do it. All right, here we go, we'll do it again. All right, can you hear me? All right. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
All right, thank you. All right, so there we are. For those who were not listening earlier, we did hear the city manager's report during the work session earlier. Moving on to item five on our agenda, I'd like to, to offer the appointment of Roy Halliburton to the Ad hoc Economic Opportunities Analysis Citizens Advisory Committee. He is to replace Sid Freedman. So if someone would like to make a motion to that order, that would be great.
So moved.
Thank you, Patrick. And a second.
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 Denise, with a second. All right, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye, or raising your hand to signify aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, Mr. Halliburton, thank you for your willingness to serve on the Citizens' Advisory Committee. All right, next, do you have anyone present for public comments?
There is no one present for public comment.
Have you received any public comments for the general meeting?
No, I have not received any public comment for the general meeting.
Okay, thank you. Dan, what about issue tracker?
So the issue tracker that was provided has most of the items on it redlined or taken out, crossed through, mainly because we've either scheduled them or dealt with them. So I wasn't sure if there were any comments on that part of the list from councilors. Hearing none, we'll move forward with that. The three items on there were, I think, a longer term item and possibly even longer term, given the economic woes we're walking into, I think, in terms of the reexamination of the TUF and, and capital project bonding and that sort of thing. I understand that some of our staff were able to get a little clarification from Counselor Johnson, so hopefully we're able to schedule that for a future date. But I think at this point, that's where that item stands as a research item and something for the future. He's nodding, so I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna get there, thumbs up. And then there was a second item on trespass citations issued to a homeless individual. I think the, the issue was both that immediacy, but also the example of Lincoln City and spending on the homeless that was brought forward. You know, as far as we're aware, there was some outreach made to that individual as far as resources. Not sure where that stands, but I think the issue, I guess the way I took the issue on the issue tracker was more to the spending side of the house and how we might look at that. And I also think that that's probably a longer term issue as well, more of a systemic kind of issue. So we can include that sort of for items for the future, I suppose, unless there's additional comment on that. Okay. And then this one predates me, the redesign of the Newburgh flag. I guess the notes here indicate that Visit Newburgh branding campaign, which I think is now Taste Newburgh, was somehow involved in this. So I'm not exactly sure on that, but I'm not sure if maybe Sue or someone else wants to chime in, but that one still listed as active.
Yeah, I'll take that one, actually. That, so Dane Finley was a, was a senior last year and had a flag design for a senior project. I mean, that's where that came from. We were gonna wait to see what, what the branding for Visit Newburgh came out to look like and what it's gonna be. But at least in my opinion, I don't think Taste Newburgh necessarily is the substance of a flag necessarily. So we do have a current, we currently have a city flag. This was to be an update. So I think that might be something that will, we're gonna have to give it a little more discussion and probably push it out to more of a contest type thing or suggestions from the public, maybe.
Okay.
Put that on, keep that one on for a while.
And we do, you know, one of the things we're working on, which is not the issue tracker and maybe not germane at this moment, but you mentioned public outreach and contests and things like that, was trying to do some engagement with the community, in particular the school age community that's home. And obviously they're gonna pick up their Chromebook or whatever they're using nowadays, but trying to get some engagement out to them in the next few weeks to sort of have some provocations to, you know, do some community building and that sort of thing. So we could, we can play around with the flag idea to some extent, but I think we're really just kind of even focusing a little more basic than that at this point.
That'd be great, awesome. All right, anything else for issue tracker, folks? All right, let's move on to the consent calendar if we can get a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the move we approve the consent's calendar.
Second?
Second.
With Stephanie. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye, or raising your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the consent calendar passes. All right, moving on to item eight, public hearings. Ordinance 2020 2861, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code to replace a discontinued consumer price index with a current CPI as pertains to rate increases eligible from state referendum process. All right, the public hearing is now called to order. Declaration of conflicts of interest or abstentions, folks. All right, hearing none, staff report, please, Mr. Zook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you. This is a fairly easy decision. Unfortunately, the, the Bureau of Labor Statistics discontinued a, a CPI, called a consumer price index. They can, they discontinued that back in 2017, the Portland Salem, Oregon, Washington CPI due to change in population thresholds and an updated methodology. So the city and as many, if not all of the municipalities in Oregon had to make decisions on which they, what they would use to replace that outgoing CPI. And so in 2018, we did a comparative analysis of the different options. The, the regions that were available were not as narrow as the Portland Salem region. So we ended up selecting the CPIU West Region Annual Average as the new citywide index. You'll find that many CPI references exist throughout the code or throughout contracts. And as those contracts have come up, we've, you know, updated those. We also have seen, began using that index in the master fee schedule that you've now seen several years. So we landed on the CPIU West Region and today is simply updating the municipal code to reflect that new index. I reference specifically section 2.15200M3 because that pertains to the rate review process, which will come subsequent to this public hearing. So that is my staff report, Mayor.
Thank you. Sue, have we received any public testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any public testimony on this item.
Okay, thank you. All right, Matt, the recommendation from staff?
Recommendation from staff, Mayor, is to change the Newburgh Municipal Code, section 2.15200M3, to reference the CPIU West Region Annual Average Index to replace the CPIU Ref, CPIU Portland Salem, Oregon, Washington Annual Average Index, which was discontinued at the end of 2018.
Any, any questions, folks, for, for Matt? All right, what about deliberation? Okay, if someone would like to consider waiving the second reading?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the second reading.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, it's been moved and seconded to waive the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the, the call for the second reading is waived. All right, and can, and to read by title only. Can we have that as well? We need a motion to that effect, right, Truman?
I'm coming, had to, had to reach around and unmute myself. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 20282861 and read by title only.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, any further discussion? All right, and I think, I believe on this hearing, we do need a roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Truman?
The reading by title?
Yes, sir, you got it.
Ordinance number 2020-2861, an ordinance amending the Newburgh Municipal Code relating to the consumer price index used in the referendum process for rates and fees set by the city council as established in Newburgh Municipal Code, section 2.15.200M3.
Okay, thank you. And now we will have a roll call, please.
Counselor Pirro?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Yonel Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Mayor 70?
Thank you. All right, moving on to the, the next public hearing on the evening, and this is on water, sewer, storm and tough rates. So let me give just a little bit of history before we launch into it, or at least background. The, this is in, has been in process for, for quite a period of time. I believe I saw that there have been eight meetings on the subject with the Citizens' Rate Review Committee. And so it is a process that's been underway for quite a while. The timing of it, because of all that is going on, is, is probably not necessarily best, but it was the way that it is structured and the way it's been set up. In this, I believe we've got it set that there will be one hearing for all four of the resolutions, if, if I've got that correct. All right. All right, so let's call this, this, to order this is now, and I will get all of these. This is Resolutions 2020 3650, 2020 3660, 2020 3661, 2020 3662, Citizens' Rate Review Committee, CRC, Rate Recommendation Improvement for Water, Wastewater, Stormwater and Transportation Utility Fee for 2021 and 2022. And that's also saying, I like to underscore that these rates, if they were to go into effect as recommended by the Citizens' Rate Review Committee, would go into effect January 1st of 2021. All right. With that, declarations of conflict of interest or abstentions, folks. All right, hearing none. Good evening, Deb Galardi, and I believe you and Matt are presenting here, so take it away, thank you.
Yeah, this is Matt Zook, finance director. Mayor, appreciate the introduction, felt like that was a good recap of where we've been. You did mention we, Citizens' Rate Review Committee, as mentioned in the staff report, has been around almost 30 years. And so has been reviewing water, wastewater, stormwater for that, since that time. In 2017, the tough was added transportation utility fee. And so the Citizens' Rate Review Committee, just in this cycle, was the second time that they reviewed that, that fee as well. So we did meet eight times between September 26th, 2019, and February 20th, 2020. And the recommendation coming out of the Citizens' Rate Review Committee was the culmination of a lot of detailed work, a lot of review, and appreciate the work that was done. It's a seven member, eight member body, seven voting members. At the end, we ended up having six members on the committee that made that final recommendation. So as you mentioned, the process is that we are bringing forward that recommendation, which was reached February 20th. So this is their recommendation at the time of their last meeting in February. So my staff report gives a, an outline of that process and the factors going into it in textual form, but Deb Galardi is our rate consultant, has been, Deb probably going back into the mid 2000s, I believe. And we just, in the last several years, went out and, actually, the last two cycles went out and did an RFP, and Deb continues to have the sharpest pencil and has the, the service that the committee has enjoyed. So I'm gonna turn it over to Deb to run through a presentation of what the process was and where we're at today. So Deb?
Okay, if we can advance the slides, please. So, good evening. I will just give a brief overview of the rate setting process that we use with the Citizens' Rate Review Committee and talk a little bit about the investment needs of the four utilities, and then conclude with the rate drivers, factors that are, that impact the rates, both in the positive and the negative, as well as the committee recommendations. Next slide, please. So as in past cycles, we follow a three step process. It begins with development of the financial plan, which is very much like you would do a financial plan for your home or business, projects annual revenue. a financial plan for your home or business, projects annual revenue and costs, and determines what the overall revenue needs of the utilities are. That's followed by what we call the cost of service analysis, which then determines what each customer class's share of that revenue requirement is, based on their specific use of each system. And then the last part is to design the rates, which is the schedule of fixed and volume charges that you, that then form the basis for the customer bills. Next slide, please. Just to look a little more, more detail, and you need to advance that a little bit so it fully loads, great. So as I mentioned, we, this is basically putting together a cash flow, cash flow projections over a five to 10-year period, and that we look at each individual source of revenue for the utilities. These are enterprise funds, so therefore they are supported by specific fees and charges of the systems, as well as reserves that have been built into the system to smooth fluctuations in expenses. Operating expenses include personnel, materials and services, repair and maintenance of the utilities, and then a big part of the annual revenue requirements are the capital financing, both in the form of cash and existing debt service that has been incurred for previous major system expansion and upgrades. Finally, also fund transfers to support indirect overhead services provided by the city, as well as funding future capital reserves for improvements that are identified in long, long-range plans for in, in the future. And let's go to the next slide, please. The committee spent significant time talking about reserves, and this process actually began several cycles ago when the understanding of the need for, to have reserves in case of emergencies, like we're experiencing now, and as I mentioned, to smooth out spikes in capital investment primarily, because we build things in large increments. And so reserves help to smooth out those fluctuations. The reserve guidelines are published by the American Waterworks Association. They, they basically apply to all the water-related utilities, and the committee spent a significant amount of time determining very thoughtfully what was an appropriate balance of holding cash reserves and funding, using those to offset what otherwise would need to be rate increases in the current cycle. Next slide, please. This gives a snapshot of the total five-year capital needs of each system, both water and wastewater, around $20 million over the five-year period in total. Stormwater and street preservation being less, a little bit less than 10 million. And go to the next slide, please. These capital investments are needed for a number of important reliability, safety, capacity issues, just to name a few for the water system, the redundant water supply, seismic resiliency, fire flow, pressure improvements, and a number of efficiency measures as well. Wastewater priorities in this five-year period include safety and, and improvements to address structural deficiencies, as well as operating efficiencies as well. Stormwater includes capacity improvements that are primarily related to existing deficiencies in the systems that address safety and flood control, as well as other system performance issues. And of course, transportation, this fee is specifically related to pavement preservation and is needed for improving critical routes to schools and coordination with underground infrastructure. Next slide, please. So going into this process some months ago, the, there were a number of really positive factors that were helping to put downward pressure on the required rate increase, that consumption, water consumption, which is the basis for both the water rates as well as sewer rates and revenues, has, had been steady, and there's been moderate customer growth. There, the city's done an excellent job in minimizing interest cost on long-term borrowing by both refinancing existing debt, as well as limiting future borrowing, and leveraging existing reserves, and also some grant funding for specific projects. On the other side, upward pressure on the rates, obviously there's significant capital investment that's needed for all four systems, and there is existing debt service that continues from prior major improvements. And there hasn't been an increase in the transportation utility fee or the tough in two years, and so it has not been keeping pace with just inflation, cost inflation for that system. Next slide, please. And of course, now there are additional pressures that will impact the revenue and the costs of the utilities. Too soon to tell exactly how significantly, but some of the factors are the, the non-residential water use will be significantly impacted by business closures and reductions in the ability to provide services. Other fees and charges, like systems development charges, which fund a portion of the capital improvements. And there are potential cost increases from both supply chain issues where materials become harder to come by and more expensive, as well as customer service transaction and other potential costs. So this is current situation will definitely have an impact on the utilities as well. Next slide, please. The recommendations of the Citizens' Rate Review Committee continue to incorporate a number of, of components related to continuing to provide financial resiliency in the very important utility systems. Part of that is, major foundation is those reserves, both the operating, providing for operating contingency, as well as capital and emergency reserves. The rate structure, there's, has been a very thoughtful process of rebalancing the revenue that comes from the different components of the rates. On the one hand, the fixed charges, the service charges that users pay every month regardless of how much water they consume, and with the volume charges, and to build towards a more sustainable and stable revenue stream. And the industry standard today is somewhere in that 30% to 40% of annual revenue from fixed charges, and these recommendations continue to bring the utilities up to within that range. And then moderate annual adjustments to minimize rate spikes. It's hard to have rate increases every year, but our experience shows us that if you don't have a rate increase, then that's generally followed by a more significant rate increase down the road. So having those continued moderate increases helps to smooth things out over the years. Next slide, please. So the specific recommendations for each of the utilities are shown here, and I will say that, just point out on water, there are two components of the water rates. One is the potable water, which the, everybody pays system-wide. The non-potable is a very specific service provided for irrigation for, at this point in time, a single customer. And the reason that that rate increase is, shows a higher amount in, oh, and I will note that these dates, my apologies, really should be January 1st of 2021 and January 1st of 2022. So the rate increase for non-potable water, the 10% initially, is related to the fact that this system, there was an engineering review of that system this year as part of this cycle, and that was the amount that would be needed to bring it to its own cost of service and to be paying based on what the actual costs are. And then the following year be, be basically an inflationary increase. The other systems, the recommendation was for uniform increases each of the two years of the rate setting period. And you can see that those range from 2% for the transportation utility fee to 9% for stormwater. Stormwater is the, the smallest of all the fees, and so that 9% is actually a lesser dollar impact than the, some of these higher percentages, which we can see in the next slide. Next slide, please. Thanks. Oh, one, one other, the other, as I mentioned, the other recommendations do include continuing for water, a slight increase in that fixed charge relative to the volume charge, and in order to get closer to a 35% revenue from fixed charges. Wastewater is already there, so maintaining that balance on that system, and then the cash reserves in, in compliance with industry standards. Next slide, please. Finally, you can see the bills here. So this is for a typical residential, single-family residential customer. You have the overall revenue increases for each year in the left-hand columns, and then the number of units assumed for this customer, and the current bill, followed by what the bill would increase to under those recommendations. So you can see that the overall total is about $6 per month each year, which equates to about 4.6% in the first year increase and 4.2% in the second year. Next slide, please. Final slide, just to conclude, show you just on a national level, the trends have been that water and wastewater rates have been increasing on average significantly more than inflation, and that's because of the need to fund backlogs of capital improvements for repair and replacement of aging infrastructure, seismic resiliency, all of the things, factors that we talked about, some of the priorities in your capital improvement plan as well. Newburgh's utility bills have actually been, and rate increases have actually been just above inflation, so have been significantly less in the last few years or the last few cycles than what we're seeing nationally. And with that, I will turn it back to Matt, if you have any other comments, Matt.
Thank you, Deb. No, I don't have any other comments. Appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, that's our staff report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Sue, do we, we'll like to open public testimony. Sue, has anyone arrived for in-person public testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have no physical public here at the city. I have not received any emails today or during the meeting. I did receive five, six emails that I put out in a supplemental packet on Friday afternoon, and also notified the, the lister that the packet had been updated. Of those comments, all were asking that we not pass rate increases at this time, except for one, which was more of an inquiry, but I put it in there anyway because she had emailed me directly about this item.
Do you, do you have them in front of you?
I do. Would you like me to read them?
That would be great, if you don't mind.
Yep, I don't mind.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna just read them in the order I put them in the packet, not necessarily the order received. So on Thursday, April 2nd, at 9:24 a.m., I received an email from Emily P. She says, "Hi, Sue, I am hoping this is the correct place to send a comment. I saw that there is a proposed increase to the city's water bill. Is there a place where I can read what this increase is proposed to fund? As someone who pays a huge water connection fee every month, but finds the Newburgh tap water absolutely disgusting to drink, to the point where I have to buy water every week from the store, I am naturally curious if this issue will be addressed. Thanks so much for pointing me in the right direction, Emily." The second came in on Tuesday, March 31st, at 7:02 p.m., from Leah S. "That's pretty shady to have this meeting during lockdown, where gatherings are prohibited. How convenient. Many people don't have access to Zoom or even know it exists, and why does this matter need to be discussed now? With all that is going on with people being laid off and people struggling to pay rent, mortgage bills, why would you even consider a rate increase at a time like this? Whoever came up with this proposal clearly needs some sensitivity training and should be ashamed of themselves. I hope this proposal backfires and you have to deal with a bunch of angry citizens who are tired of getting screwed over by the city and the insane utility costs." The next one came in on April 1st, 5:13 p.m., from Alan Nelson. "Good afternoon. I recently found out about the proposed upcoming water rate increases and was surprised I had not received a notice in the mail regarding these proposals. Given that Newburgh is already one of the most expensive water districts and the noted lack of competition in the area, I strongly feel that these increases should be put to the citizens for approval. The document provided for justification does nothing to explain where the current rate money is going. And in the additional complication of the current crisis in the world with the expected depression to follow, I find it hard for any government office to expect the citizens with it in its purview to sacrifice more when they were already having a hard time making ends meet. I have seen my own bills mount year after, over year, in spite of using less water for the same time period. If we have infrastructure uses, issues due to the rising population, why have the developers of these new additions to the city infrastructure not paid for the improvements to support their development? I would strongly beseech you to look at the future of our city and whether these plans support or hinder its growth. Thank you, Alan S. Nelson." The next one came in on March 31st, at 4:53 p.m., from Carrie Penn. "My husband and I live on Antonia Way. We vote to not raise the water, sewer, stormwater rate. We are already paying almost $200 monthly before summer. We lived in Salem and Tewolleton previously and never had such high rates. Our rates are way too high." The next one came in on April 2nd, at 8:54 p.m., from Ryan L. "Hello, Sue, although unfortunately rates with everything creep up every year, please consider that due to COVID-19 and all the subsequent city and state closures, our economy and the people being choked financially, to be considering rate increases at this time would reflect poorly upon the local government if it truly cares about the well-being of its citizens. Water and its use are a necessity, and in the city of Newburgh, it is used as an unjustifiable excuse to tax its residents an exorbitant amount of money for now than just water use without the ability for us to vote on all amount increases. Seeing as not everyone in the community is versed in using online platforms, please do not add more unnecessary stress by trying to work on such a proposal at this time." The final one came in on March 31st, at 8:56 p.m., from Matthew Stidman. "Raising the bill on water and sewer even farther at a time when hygiene is even more important than usual is not only unethical, it will ensure I do not vote for a single income come election time. Our water and sewer cost is already too high. Raising it will only make businesses not want to set up shop here, and residents look for housing elsewhere."
Okay, Sue, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, a recommendation from staff, and Matt, I don't know if you want to address any of the comments, or at least, you know, we gave a little bit of a summary as to how rates came, how we came to this point and why, but maybe you want to touch on that again a little bit as well.
Yeah, sure. I, I do think that, you know, some of the sentiments expressed, you know, reflect the gap in time between the Citizens' Rate Review Committee last meeting and what you're hearing today. Citizens Rate Review Committee last meeting and what you're hearing today. You know, staff has a, an obligation to move forward with the recommendation. To present it as is and what we're asking. So the staff recommendation tonight is to, you know, consider all the testimony, consider the, the presentation, the work of the committee. You know, and make, and make a decision as to how you want to move forward. So. I guess that's my response and probably my conclusion to our staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I had a couple of questions for Matt, if that's all right.
Please.
So in the presentation and also I listened to some of the. Citizen Rate Review meetings, being trapped at home, don't have a lot to do. And I attended one before the whole. Crisis was going on. And at that meeting as well, the water redundant supply project was mentioned. And I'm, I've been to some meetings on that. We, we got a staff update. What kind of numbers or what, how did you estimate what that's going to come down to? And how that's going to cost and impact rates? Was it just kind of a? This is a ballpark number or did you have a specific cost and I'm just forgetting what that was?
No, actually, let me, I believe Karn Hoffman is on the line too. As was mentioned by Deb, that was an engineering. Study this year to reflect the rates that are, excuse me, the costs that are involved with that separate system. So. Karn, I don't know if you are still on the line. Love to see if you could help with that.
I am on the line. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. So, so the redundant water supply is. What's in the current five year plan was the 2 million gallons a day that the water master plan originally noted that we would need. There, the council subcommittee subsequently requested that we look at. A redundant supply of 2 to 8 million gallons a day, looking out way out into the future, which is what we really need to do for water source. Work. So we've been working through that. We have not added any additional cost into the water CIP right now. So the rates don't reflect. Any, anything other than the 2 million gallons a day that was in the master plan originally. So there's about $3.2 million in the five year plan for redundant water supply. We may need more. And until the council decides what that secondary source would be. We're kind of shooting in the dark until we do that.
I had a follow on, if that's all right.
Yep, please.
And so then, in addition, there's expected to be. You know, an economic impact to what's going on right now. I was curious if that was, and you had a slide in your presentation. Did, was that calculated in these rates after the CRCC or was it, is that just something we're gonna adjust as we move forward?
Deb, you want me to?
Oh, I, I can address the, so. No, this, this situation evolve has, is evolving as, as we all know daily and. No, so we had finished the rate review process. At, before this really got going, so. The potential for reduced revenue under existing rates is high. Because of non-residential, in particular, reduced consumption. That is not reflected in these numbers nor are any potential cost increases that come out of. Supply chain issues or other things.
Mr. Mayor, I have two more. I'm sorry. I'm, you know, maybe my questions. The other question I had was for Matt is. I remember the last time we went through this, the council decided to do, to change it. To add more money for INI. And don't ask me what that stands for. I know it's water getting into sewer pipes, but. I'm not sure what it stands for. But anyway. How late did, did we go on that process? Was that, when did we finally finish up? The rate vote for council, because I know we sent it back and then they sent it back to us and then we changed it anyway. And so I was just curious, you know, how, how late did that go in the process?
Yeah, good question. That went, I believe, just into June. So, you know, we, we have traditionally brought these in April. Every year. And we've also done it in the same format where the, the resolutions are separate so that. Council can. You know, handle each rate process differently, giving you the flexibility if you wanted to, to refer something back to the, the CRC. So that process, I mean, Assistant Rate Review Committee met fairly quickly after. That decision being handed back to them by the council. And so that, in their recommendation. If I recall correctly, they stood by their recommendation. Came, came back to council, then council made their, their decision. So. Yeah, so that's, that's the history on that last, and that's been my experience, my only experience of having that bounce back and forth between the council and the, the committee.
Okay, and then, and I lied, I have two more. Number one would be, you mentioned at the last Citizen Rate Review Committee. That this was the, one of the most robust discussions and analysis of a citizen group that you'd seen. Since you've been at Newburg. And I, I just wanted to have you kind of talk about that a little bit and. I, I listened to some of them and I was impressed how they, they went through. That process, but I was just curious what your thoughts were on, on how that process went.
Yeah, I think you had a mix on this committee of. Three or so, about half the committee had been on the, you know, served on this committee for. You know, multiple years. And so they had a, you know, better understanding. But then you had. Probably three, you know, brand new committee members as well who, you know, come in with, you know, a lack of understanding. They're to learn. And I will say that they asked some pretty decent questions. I can say that, you know, one of the members, and it was really. Into checking the numbers, was asking for Excel spreadsheets to, you know, make sure the rates were looking the way that, that they're being represented. And I will say that this was not a unanimous, you know, recommendation. There are committee members that. Maintain a, a strong, you know, position that rates should continue to go down, even though they. Understand what goes into operating a utility. So. There was some real decent dialogue about the, the non-portable rate. And, and how that interacts with the portable water rate system and, you know, who should be paying, who should be bearing that? That rate, the benefit that the non-portable water system has on the portable rate payers. There is a benefit to them as well. So, you know, like I said, and as you mentioned, the committee really did. They didn't just, you know, rubber stamp, you know, anything that was, was brought forward. They actually did. Some really good digging. And I think that if you were to ask any of them today, they would stand behind this recommendation. Again, as they. Made on February 20th. They have not met since then, so they haven't had a chance to maybe, you know, reconsider what they might do. But I think they really ended up on a pretty solid position. So.
Last one, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. The, the impact to the budget this year, I know you guys are putting the budget together now. And this wouldn't go into effect until January. 2021. And, you know, how, would that mean a supplemental budget if we were to delay this after June? Or how, how would that process work? I'm, I'm just curious in the nuts and bolts of that.
That's a great, a great question. Obviously, if the council were, we, we bring this. Recommendation to the council in April so that they can make this a recommendation or a decision so that we can budget appropriately. The council were to. Make a decision to not move forward with the resolutions, either with a no vote or a postponement. We would basically, you know, dial back some of, have to dial back the revenue and make an assumption. This is a decision that the city manager makes as the budget committee, budget officer, but, you know. It would probably be the most conservative position to assume that rates would remain flat for the fiscal year. And dial back the revenue and decide on how we would handle that. Would we postpone some projects? Will we eat into a little bit of the reserves? Or a balance of both. And so we've already had some good discussion. Over the last week, week and a half, as to how we would do that. So I think that, you know, we're prepared to move forward with proposed budget regardless of the way that the council moves. We, Deb, I asked Deb to run some numbers as to, you know, what kind of revenue. Reductions would we anticipate by not having the rate increase? As well as just as she mentioned, you know, some of the consumption not happening because of the businesses that may. Not be consuming as much due to closure or, you know, temporary closure. So. We've got, we've got some numbers we're ready to go with, depending on how the council moves tonight. So. A postponed project wouldn't necessarily mean an undone project. We would, Karn and. And staff would be making decisions on what would be most critical to do this next year. We have some definite commitments as to how much reserve we have. We have to maintain a certain amount of reserves for our debt. And that's, you know, legal obligation. I don't think we're in danger of, you know, jeopardizing those. So we have some specific numbers and, you know, we can work through that as the council directs. So.
Matt, follow on on that. If, I mean, how much, how much money are we talking about if these rates aren't increased? I mean, is it, you know, is it 5 million? Is it, you know, even a ballpark number?
Yeah, I'm gonna, Deb, if you wanna. We just got these numbers before. You're talking about if the rates do not increase.
Stay flat if they don't go anywhere.
Yeah. Here's some quick estimates that Deb provided. And Deb, if I, if I, if you have any additional comments, chime in here, but. You know, we're looking at. About $250,000. Revenue impact if we don't increase rates for water in this first year. And there's, you know, Deb mentioned that we do a five year, you know, projection period. So. You know, there's a, about a million dollar impact over five years if we were not to, to raise those. Probably more appropriately, just to look at that first year. But in sewer, we'd probably lose about 300,000. In that first year. Storm water, about 165,000. And the tough would be about 25,000 out of about 100,000, excuse me, not 100,000. 1.1 million. So. You know, Deb, Deb provide, do you, do you want to comment on the, the analysis you did, Deb, and what some of your recommendations would be?
Yeah, I mean, that's, those were the numbers as you stated. So that's a total, if you combine all the utilities of about 750,000. I'm doing my math quickly here on the side. And as Matt said, if that were not to be made up in a future rate increase, then, you know. That's a cumulative effect going forward and a compounding effect. But. That, that just, that just reflects the no rate increase. It does not reflect. Any additional impact from reduced consumption. Those sorts of things. We have updated some of the projections of systems development charges because of substantial slowdown in construction and things like that. And so those will also have an impact.
Thank you. Any other questions, folks? Let me, since we were talking about the members of the committee and, and correct me if any of this is incorrect, but the, the committee members for Citizens Review and they should be applauded for their. This isn't, and I don't think I have an updated one, so I will not do that actually, because I know there's others on it. All right, any other, any other questions, folks? All right, Matt, then, Matt and Deb, your, your recommendation, please.
Mayor, the recommendation is that having heard all the. Presentation, the public comment that council will make a decision as to how they want to handle. Moving the rates forward for January 21st, January 1st, 2021, January 1st, 2022. That's my recommendation.
Okay. All right. All right, council deliberation. What do you, what do you all think? I can, I can call you by name if we like, want to do that. Denise, you're first. You're the first one on my screen.
Oh, sure. Actually, I'm kind of. I'm okay with raising the rates in January, but what I would say is I would be more comfortable. Doing this vote in June. Where we have a better idea of the future and, and all, all that's happened. And I think it would, it would be fair to the public. You know, if, if the economy crashes, whatever happens, if things immediately rebound, then we could vote yes. If it crashes, we might have to rethink that. The committee did not work on. This during this, you know, so there's that. Sorry, that was a lot of this and that. But. Anyway, so that's, that's basically my, I would be more comfortable revisiting it in June.
Thank you. Jean, what do you think?
That was my feeling too, just to push it off a bit like that to June. With so much uncertainty going on right now, if we can.
Stephanie?
This is a tough one for me. I, I agree wholeheartedly with. Making the decision after we know where we are economically as a collective. A couple of my hesitations with that is, you know, these citizens work really hard. On this and they didn't work within the confines of what we're going through right now. But I always hesitate to have citizens hand us a piece of work and for us to then. Sort of set it aside. Because it is work that they did and we do call on citizens to make these decisions because they're hard and they spend a lot of time doing that. So. I, I certainly want the committee to know that we recognize the amount of work they put into it and that. We wouldn't be setting this aside because we didn't think that they did good work or their recommendation wasn't what should happen, but. Because we're faced with some times that we didn't anticipate. And I also don't want to kick the can of crisis down the road. I certainly wouldn't want to get into a situation where. You know, we don't raise rates for however long and then we look at exorbitant increases down the road. So I just want to be cautious about that. But I certainly agree with waiting to make some of these decisions until we sort of know. How long this is going to happen and where we are economically as a city. But also as a community before we make these decisions. And I certainly applaud the, the. The committee for doing as much work as they have done with this. But, you know, it's hard to make that decision right now. When we're faced with so much uncertainty. And I think it goes a long way. For the public to understand that we don't take these. Conversations lightly or these decisions lightly, that we are paying attention to what's happening within our community. But also that we need to do the right thing to make sure that we continue to have water in our city and sewer. And we're providing the services that our city needs without raising. You know, costs five years from now in a way that, you know, prices out a lot of people. So. I, I would, I would definitely like to see this decision made after we kind of know where we stand.
Matt, just a question or potentially for Matt. If we were to ask the CRC now to, to reconvene. For a brief meeting, just knowing the situation we're currently in, to get their input. I know that when I served, I served on this thing for, I don't know how many cycles, but anyway, that. At times it was, it could be feel, as, as I think Stephanie mentioned, is it could feel like we sent something up to council. And they just bounced it back doing whatever they wanted to do. Is that possible to put them back together for a brief meeting?
Mayor, I'm not asking that they change anything. I'm asking that we wait. Till June, we figure out what's going on. And then if we need to make changes, then we send it back. But now that's premature.
Denise, I understand. I'm just asking the question as to whether or not. Denise, I understand. I'm just asking the question as to whether or not they could be brought back into the conversation. Whether we delay it or not, just whether they could, even, even, you know, if it's possible, given the ordinances and all.
Yeah, I'll answer that. And Truman, I don't think we're in, we're in sort of new territory. You're, you're not asking the committee necessarily to go back and do specific action like was done in the most, you know, as Counselor Johnson mentioned for a specific purpose, you're asking essentially for some feedback on what, you know, how they would weigh in on their recommendation, given their current economic time, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mayor. You know, we, we, this thing developed so quickly and has changed so quickly that I don't, you know, mid, mid-March, you know, scheduling a meeting with public, public, you know, notice and getting the CRC together wasn't even necessarily, you know, possible. I would venture to say that yes, you can reassemble the CRC and get them, they might even appreciate a fresh, you know, voice on their recommendation. I, they, each of the committee members were made aware of the public hearing tonight. And I would venture that some of them are probably even listening right now. We did not get any, any direct public comment. And obviously, if we were all together in a building, we might, you know, have a little more visual to provide them some opportunity. But if you wanted to gather them together or recommend they reassemble for that purpose, I think they'd be open to that. And I think it's well within the confines of our Newburgh Municipal Code.
Again, I'm not, I'm just not suggesting that we do that, just whether it's possible or not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
I was expecting to go last. Hi, um. I agree with Stephanie. This is a really hard one. I do know that the, at the last meeting, I listened to it just before this meeting. There was some discussion by community members about going through projects. And I don't know, maybe that, you know, that didn't happen because of all that's going on now, but my concern really about delaying this and concern about these rates overall is that we have some pretty major projects, lift stations, water redundancy. There's always an infrastructure money. And the longer we don't do these types of things, the harder it is to flatten that that cost and spread it out over a longer period of time. And so, you know, I am a yes vote on increasing these rates. I'm just not sure we should make that vote tonight. Couple of things, you know, and I know I'm kind of jumping back and forth, but I made some notes. I'm concerned about the marginalized community members who might not have access to internet or being able to watch the, the meeting tonight or are able to get a, a message in. I'm worried about that. You know, I'm also worried that, you know, a $6 increase per month might not break my bank account, but that could mean the difference. You know, some, some kid getting a lunch or, you know, I'm, I'm worried about those types of things. And them not having the ability to, and I know we have programs in place, but them not having the ability to, you know, make those comments to us in this forum. And that, that's the piece of it that I keep struggling with. You know, I think that we're going to be able to, to pass these, but if those people aren't able to come to the meeting and voice their concerns and then have our staff be able to reach out to them and educate them about the programs that are available, they're not going to be able to, to take advantage of those. And it'll just be another cost that they'll have to take on. So anyway, that, that's all I had.
Thank you. Jules?
So similarly to the other counselors as well, echoing some of the thoughts, I think the public comments really hit me. So hearing from folks how they took their time to really go out of their way and express how they're feeling about the rates, I mean, the increase in rates. And I totally agree with Stephanie and Counselor Finley and Counselor Patrick in terms of why it's necessary, but I don't know if right now is the right time to be looking because of the amount of uncertainty. And also really going along with Patrick, I think that there's been a lot of people left out of this conversation who, and talking about like marginalized communities, that's really who could be, this rate increase be impacting the most. And I think it's really, really important that we're able to get them had a, like, public meeting where we can really hear these folks out. Folks who, language is a barrier, who might not, might have not even known the process of submitting a comment. Because as, even being before, before being on like council, like that's knowledge I wouldn't have known, even though I speak the language. And so just keeping that in the back of our minds is important.
Thank you. Elise?
Hi. Well, Erin did the talking for me. I, those are a lot of my thoughts. I think the one thing I would mention is just I really don't think that we're going to know what our economic situation is after all this, unfortunately. And I think if people are concerned now, unfortunately, it could get a lot worse. So I don't feel comfortable where I typically would vote yes on something, on this project or on this motion. I just feel, I would feel more comfortable waiting to determine, you know, if, I, you know, understand that the, all of our projects are extremely important, that this would go to fund, but also putting food on the table is probably more important for our people. So I would, like everyone has said, wait, like to push it out to wait to see what our situation is like after this is over.
Yeah, and I, you know, I agree as well. I think, you know, unfortunately, the, the timing is not, is not great. And that the timing is the fault of no one. It's just, that's the way it is. You know, I would at least like to at least open the opportunity for the Citizens Rate Review Committee to comment in the next few months just on where they are. But otherwise, I, I agree. I don't think we can, I would not be able to vote for rate increases at this point. Maybe, you know, three months, six months from now, maybe. All right. That seems to be, Matt or Truman, do we need a motion to postpone this then?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that the council give this to a date certain. If the council wants to postpone the consideration of it. And then also just to be clear that you close public testimony. And if you were to take this issue up again at a later date, it would take a motion of the council to reopen public testimony.
Would that motion have to happen then or now, Truman? Or both?
I think it would be more proper to do it at the time. Although you certainly could add into your motion to postpone to a certain, you know, with the intent of allowing additional testimony at that time. But I, I would probably still recommend on that date, a motion with a vote be taken.
All right, as to a date certain, it looks like we've got meetings in June on the 1st and the 15th of June. Is that enough time out, do we think, between now and then? Are we going to know anything by June? I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, I would say that you're probably not, certainly not with enough certainty to make this a much more comfortable vote. You know, and we're also going to be bringing the budget forward in the first. So I would think that maybe for us to have a number would be helpful, and it sounds like we've got one. And so there's not an urgency in my mind to bring this forward in, in June or July with that.
All right. How's September? If you want a date certain, how's September sound then? Mid-September? Anybody?
See, heads nodding.
Yeah, heads are nodding. I think it's September 14th would be the, the
20, 21, right? 21st.
21st. Does that work? All right, if so, if someone would like to make a motion and the notion that we will reopen public testimony at that time, that would be great.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we table this topic until September 21st. And at that time, I would request that we reopen the public testimony.
I second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right.
Might also like to throw in there that if the CRRC wants to take a look at this again, I think that's
Yeah, that'd be great. In fact, actually, on that note, Matt, if you've got the CRs, the list of members, I'd like to read it into the record if we could tonight. I don't, I don't have it. The one on the website doesn't look like it's updated. So, all right, any further discussion to that motion? All right. Do we have, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye or raise your hand. Looks like it passed 7-0, so. Thank you, thank you all. Moving on, everyone.
Before you move on?
Sure, sure.
Just for some clarity in the record, is the council sending this back to the RRC to reconsider their recommendation, or are you just soliciting more informal comments from the committee members?
I'm happy with, personally, I'm happy with informal comments, but I don't know how everyone else feels. Yeah?
I have no intention of them making changes at this point.
And it's more for their information, and if they would like to, to respond to us, that would be fantastic. Give us some as well.
So Mayor, I'll take that as clarity then, that you are not requesting the CRC to reassemble, which the council does, you would need to direct them. You'll recall at the beginning of this process, the council does direct them to begin that buying process. So to Truman's point, you know, just for clarity, I, I'm, I'm hearing that we, you're not asking them to reassemble in a formal meeting, but just you're asking for their solicitation just, you know, as commentary, individual commentary.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the consensus. Yep. All right, we good on that one? Okay. All right, let's move on to new business, item 9A, Resolution 2020 3648, Mid-Wilamette Valley COG IGA. And it looks like, imagine that is Mr. Rux.
Can you guys hear me? What happened?
There you go.
Are you there? Okay. Took a while for my mute button to get off. So the issue you have before you this evening is an intergovernmental agreement with council of government. So Newburgh has a contract with the City of Dundee to provide planning services. And with departure of our senior planner back in December, we brought forward to you an IGA and hired the COG to backfill until we could refill that position. Unfortunately, the recruitment for our planning manager was not successful. And so we're back into a position where our existing IGA for those services expired March 31st. The COG is willing to continue on with those services until the end of June of 2020. So the IGA reflects that. I put in your fiscal impact. The impact for hiring the COG is about $8,000 to $10,000 to our general fund. But that is in part contingent upon the, the level of services that COG is providing on our behalf to the City of Dundee. So my recommendation on this is to adopt Resolution 2020 3648. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions for Doug, anyone? Hearing none. How's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move we adopt Resolution Number 2020 dash 3648.
Second. Jean got that one, I think. All right. Any further discussion?
Mayor, this is Sue. I couldn't hear who gave the second.
Jean?
Counselor Pieros.
Okay, thank you.
Pieros, yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Pieros. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Aye. Oppose, same side. Hearing none, it passes 7-0, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution, no, item 9B, Resolution 2020 3659, Newburgh Business Emergency Relief Grants with the very appropriate acronym, BURG. Here we go. Dan?
Yeah, I tried very hard to create a BURG acronym. So the action here would be for the council to ratify the expenditure of $100,000 in general funds. This is an action that I've taken using emergency powers. We extended the that in our consent item in essentially trying to mitigate the economic impact, which is, in my mind, part of the the crisis that we're dealing with. It's not, it's obviously a public health crisis, but there's also a severe economic crisis and economic impacts to the community. So this program, the BURG program, is something that is somewhat similar to what other communities in the area have been doing and communities nationally have been doing, which, which is to try to provide grants to, to local business owners for immediate stabilization. Our program would focus entirely on rent and mortgage payments, really just trying to provide that initial lifeline. And you know, the, the basic premise, $100,000 would go into $2,500 max awards to try to spread that across the community. That would be approximately 40, depending on how this rolls. And, and we've seen anecdotally from other communities that the, the programs that they've put out have gone quickly and that they, they have maxed out their funding requests. So we shall see. The intent is to launch the program tomorrow to the public at 8:00 AM and make those awards hopefully by the end of the week. Like I said, the intent is, is to have that stabilization in crisis. And so with that, I think in the, the description, you know, the requirements really to have a physical presence in, in Newburgh, to be a local business, locally owned, 15 or fewer employees, so we're looking to assist small businesses in our community. Part of the reason for that is the Business Oregon data shows that with 1,100-ish businesses in Newburgh, 80% of those are, would meet this general qualification of 15 or fewer employees. The idea also, we will validate, you know, business license and that they're in good standing with the city and in other areas and, and good residents, as it were, good actors. And then also making sure that they've had some level of success, so operations a year or more. And the intent there is to hopefully provide for sustenance and viability for businesses that have had some, some time operating. We are looking to have a portion of the business. Grants go towards minority-owned and women-owned businesses and try to focus on, on that percentage there as well. And that is the BURG program. So again, it's, it's really ratification of an action that is already underway. I would like to add a couple of things that this is not the only program that we're offering for an incentive. The other program, Support Local Challenge, is modeled after a program from the City of Dayton. So we're robbing and duplicating from our neighbors and trying to, to take a good idea and expand it into our community. The idea here would be that for the Support Local Challenge, that residents would spend money locally, provide us with a copy of the receipt and a utility bill or utility account number. We can apply for every $25 spent in Newburgh, we would apply $15 to their utility bill as a rebate. And so up to $75 of rebate. So in essence, five times the $25 spent per month. And we'll evaluate that program after the end of the month, just to see how that works, you know, and that would and what the demand is. But the idea there is to try to provide some benefit to residents as well and to businesses at the same time. You know, the focus on business is really the idea that they are employers in our community and trying to sustain those local businesses to sustain local jobs. And the other programs I would offer is that there are tough waivers for businesses that have closed entirely. We have tried to promote that and have had a few takers on that waiver. And then there are residential hardship programs as well for utilities. So with that, we're trying to do what we can locally with what we can control, understanding that our budget is equally, maybe getting hit. And as we're planning, we're seeing a big hole coming forward in our next year's budget. But what we're trying to do is use funds that we have to help the community and try to bridge. So I'll leave it there and hopefully you all ratify the action I've taken.
All right, any other questions for Dan about the BURG program or the utility rebate program?
Guess what? I have a couple of questions.
Great.
First off, the 15 or fewer employees, I was wondering if that was full-time equivalents or actual employees, whether they're part-time or full-time?
It's meant for a full-time equivalent. I think what we're also looking at though is the idea that we're not sure what we're going to get. And so that's our goal at this point, you know, we'd like to have the most impact possible. So some of the criteria we might think about are the number of employees that we can support through, you know, this grant to that business. And then also sort of what type of businesses they are and, you know, what type of wages that they're offering, those kinds of things. So looking at, I'm guessing a few things in the criteria when we see them side by side.
Okay, follow on if I might. Also, the $100,000 number, how did you come up with that? Where did, where did that come from?
It came from a general idea of what other people were doing. And we don't have comparative to some of our neighbors who are offering much more robust programs. We don't have an urban renewal authority. And, you know, a lot of those folks were using their URA to help fund some of this. And that, that isn't a source available to us yet. But on some level, this is what we felt comfortable with, knowing that we were also potentially looking at cuts to our own budget of, you know, probably up to a million in the next year. So trying to be somewhat conservative, but also know that we had a tool at our disposal.
And then my final one is, how are you going to advertise this?
We have advertised it already through the web and social media. We're also calling people directly to try to support that and using the local chamber and downtown coalition and other partners in the, in the community. So we've actually not advertised or not posted the application. We've actually had some industrious people find the application on our website and who have already applied. So they probably have an IT feature, but on some level, we're not yet ready to look at the applications. But tomorrow 8:00 AM, it'll be posted and available.
And Dan, it's, the outreach will be to, to the Spanish-speaking business owners as well, will it?
Yes, it will. I see that Counselor Martinez Plancarte is going to maybe chime in there, it looked like.
Yeah, so I reached out to a couple, well, I know one person specifically that has a business here. And they had a couple of their contacts, so they gave me the information. And as soon as I received the application, I'll be calling folks just so that they're aware of it. And a question for you, Dan, is there a deadline? Or like when are folks supposed to put this in?
Yeah, it's not, there's not a deadline per se. What we had conceived of was that it will take applicants through the week and assume that we will, you know, within a day or so, probably see more than 40 applications. And so, you know, at that point, we'll then hand it off to our team of community volunteers to give us some assessment. And then we'll make the final call at the city as to how we distribute those. But I'm assuming by the end of the week, they'll be decided. So the sooner the better, without saying first come, first served. That's definitely not what we're looking at. But when we exhaust the money that we have, we'll definitely, we'll be done for now, unless the council has an appetite for more.
Could folks request an application, like a paper copy, or does it have to be done online?
Right now, it's set up as a web form, guessing that we can fill it out for people. If they wanted to call us, we could probably walk them through it and fill it out.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably easier that way. What we'll be able to do is essentially download it and hand it off to our review committee in sort of a table form, and it'll just speed that review up, you know. So the more we can keep it in one place, the better from a review standpoint. And I will say that, you know, from the volunteer standpoint, I appreciate the support from the chamber and from the downtown coalition. They're definitely very much out there trying to support local businesses and, you know, pushing us to, to get this launched.
All right, other questions, folks? Dan, just one, you mentioned minority of women-owned veteran preference too, is there, is that a...
Yeah, sorry, I should have mentioned that one as well, yep.
Okay, and then the other is, I think you may have mentioned this, but I just want to be sure, is will part of the criteria be sort of something more nebulous, like community involvement? Is that, is that a part of the application?
I think that one's a little harder to quantify in some way. You know, if there's a good metric for it, I'd be happy to put it in there. But at this point, it's not per se, community involvement. But I think that by using community volunteers to review the applicants, I'm hoping that we'll get a flavor of that. You know, my concern being here for, you know, a number of weeks still, you know, that I think I can count on one hand. I'm not going to know that. And so definitely look to the community for that input.
Awesome, great, thank you. All right, anybody else, any other further questions? All right, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor, we have one public comment for this item.
Please, please.
This is from Shannon Buckmaster at the Shahealan Valley Chamber of Commerce. She wanted to say that we appreciate the generous, fair, and thoughtful responses of the city of Newburgh toward our businesses that are most challenged by the economic impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. We believe that this process is designed in the best interest of providing efficient and immediate resources to our businesses with the highest need. We're committed to continued collaboration and transparent partnership with the city as they solicit applications and administer these funds.
Thank you. All right, how's about a motion, folks?
I'll do it. My screen shut off though, hold on. Better make Dan sweat a little, just... Okay, ready. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city manager's emergency action to create Newburgh Small Business Grant to aid Newburgh businesses in distress as a result of COVID-19 closures and social distancing mandates, number 2023659.
Second.
Patrick with a second. All right, any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that this is a really great program. You know, Dan came here, he has literally been here, not even two months, and, you know, kind of being tested by fire. So thank you so much for putting this together. I also want to take the opportunity to thank the mayor for his, his work on this crisis as well. I think, you know, his videos have been great and his messaging has been great. So you guys have shown real leadership and I'm very, very impressed. So thank you for all the work you've done.
I definitely second that. Dan, yeah, I definitely, you, you really have shown... This is the culture of Newburgh and you're going to fit right in because this is what we do. We show up for our neighbors every day. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Here's...
And at least one young person in my family appreciated, really got the BURG part. That was good, good move. We need to include young people.
All right, did, did we, we got a, did we have a vote on that? I don't know that we did.
You have a motion on the floor.
Got a motion on the floor. All right, all in favor signify by raising your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Aye.
Looks like it's a 7-0, Sue. All right, and then I believe...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Also, now I think, I'm not sure that this is on your agenda, folks, but Sue did want to talk to us about an election item. The floor is...
Lacy, can you bring up that PowerPoint slide? So I apologize for this not being in your packets, but with things as they have been developing, some chatter on the city recorder listserv, we're all, you know, navigating these new waters together on how to administer our regular processes in this time. And then I spoke with Dan last week about this. So the city of Medford did some research about nomination procedures. And I know you all have that memorized, it's chapter 2.05.030 of the code. But this is basically how we nominate people to run as candidates. So I did a little bit of basic research and we haven't really touched the election section of the code in 23 years, 1996 was the last time. Formal procedures were set up in 1948. And then the number of signatures was set in 1984. So just for the listening public, the elections are held every other year. This is an election year. Districts 1, 3, and 5 will be open for nomination by petition. The issue for me has been the struggle to say, this is, this is the way it is established in our code. And we do have a district system, so we have people nominated by district. However, in light of the health concerns and the CDC guidelines and the governor's, at this point, no time limit on the social distancing measures. I had a distinct concern that this is a good time to review this chapter of the code. So I'm bringing it to you to get feedback. My suggestion is to amend the code April 20th, to specifically amend that portion of the chapter on the nomination procedure and to allow people to file, pay a fee in lieu of collecting signatures. It's not something I've ever, you, you hear me come to you very rarely about elections. But my concern is that I need to start the election cycle. That means preparing all of my materials. That means making sure they're compliant with changes in the law from, you know, 2018 to now. And generally, I start that cycle in the spring. And I try to have a candidate materials ready by mid-April. And I generally open the filing period sometime in May. Candidates, so election law here is, is a, is a strange creature. And it's made up of different elements at the city, county, and state levels. So while the opening of the window is entirely up to me as to when to open the filing period, the closure or the deadline for filing is not. That is set by state statute and is August 25th. And so what I bring to you tonight for discussion is the fact that I want some feedback as to whether you feel this is a valid concern, if you would like me to bring forward an ordinance on April 20th to change the code, or if we, I should proceed as I have in years past.
All right, folks, thoughts? Anybody?
Sue, when are signatures due?
So signatures are due no later than August 25th. The filing deadline to close the period is set by the state. The opening period is set by me. And I had explained to Dan that I had planned to open it after Memorial Day weekend. In order for a code change to take effect, we would either need to have one month, 30 days to, for the ordinance to take effect and/or we would have to pass it with an emergency clause. So one option is to not do anything. Another option is to bring it to you April 20th with the general 30-day deadline. Another is to bring it to you May 4th with an emergency passage. The issue is I'm still, you know, I have to, sometimes I have people start asking and come in or zoom in, I'm going to have to figure that out, to meet with me about filing for office ahead of the filing period being opened. So I generally try to have the binders, materials ready at least a month, if not longer than a month, available to the public before I open, open the filing period.
Okay, thank you. I would say time is going to fly. I mean, how fast is this last month gone? I mean, we've all been playing catch-up. I would prefer to see it done now than a hurry up in, in the end. That would just, that's what I think.
All right, anyone else, any other thoughts?
I agree with Denise on that. I think let's just get it done so that Sue has what she needs to start doing all of her work around this because I know it's a lot of work.
I also agree.
All right, anyone else? Seems like we got nodding heads, Sue. So if you want to try to get something together for the 20th, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate it. I will bring it forward to you on April 20th.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much. Anything else, folks? I think we've made it to the end of the agenda. No? All right, the only thing I've got is that for, for the public, this will be posted, this Zoom video will be posted on the city's website, as will the audio. So you're welcome to listen to it there as well. And as Dan mentioned at the very beginning, if you are going out, if you're going to be going into public to Fred's or Safeway, wherever you're going, do put, put some form of, there you go, Dan is now demonstrating the proper use of said mask. So let's do that. And everybody stay healthy out there, right, everybody? So let's stay healthy and we'll see you all by video chat in the not-too-distant future, I'm sure. All right, have a nice evening, see you all, bye-bye. Bye, sleep well, Newburgh.